All are present, all selectmen are present. And start by transmitting your treasury warrants forty-five, forty-five A, forty-six, forty-six A, forty-seven, and forty-seven A. A motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor? unanimous. And we have two meetings of approval of minutes, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten, and May tenth, two thousand and ten. We have a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of April twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten, and May tenth, two thousand and ten.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? unanimous. Okay. Sorry, we're a little late here tonight. Our executive session went a little long. Our first appointment that was scheduled for seven o'clock was Scott C. Grant, Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, and the reasoned request to use the town common for the annual Fourth of July festivities. Mr. Grant.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This year's event will start on Monday, June the twenty-eighth. We actually have an extra night this year because it is our thirtieth anniversary. First night will be a throwback night. The committee will be doing the meal, burger, drink, chips, and dessert for two bucks, nineteen eighty prices. So come early, eat often. The Family Day fireworks will be on Friday evening, July second. Whenever the fourth falls on a Sunday, it messes up our schedule a little bit. So the Family Day fireworks will be on Friday, the second. Family Day will be on Saturday, the third, and the big fireworks will also be on Saturday, the third. The rain date for that, which of course we will not need, is Monday, July the fifth. So officially, our request is from June twenty-eighth to July the fifth. Once again, this year, we're delighted to have more than two dozen Wilmington-based nonprofit organizations serving as vendors, meal servers, and as sponsors. And I always wish to take this opportunity to thank the board, Town Manager Mike Kyra and his staff, as well as the Building Department, Health Department, Police and Fire Departments, Department of Public Works, the Public Buildings Department, and the School Department, without which we couldn't put on this event every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. I don't know if this is the right time. I'd like to ask the manager, Mike. I know last year, we talked about this, and I know I brought up the fact that background checks with the Carnival employees, and I brought that up last year, and I know the board supported that, and unfortunately, there was an incident that happened, as we are all aware of. Is that, is this the appropriate time to incorporate that vote, make, allowing that, to support it, allowing the Chief of Police to do investigations of all the background checks, I'm saying?
Chief, we are. We are doing that. I mean, you know, it's
Automatic.
Automatically, yeah. Point well made. The chief is doing those. I think he has to have them within thirty days of the, so by the end of this week, he should have all of the names of all of the individuals who are going to be used by the Carnival folks, and he will conduct the background check on each one.
I'm not pushing the panic button. You guys do a great job, volunteerism, but I know I brought that up last year, and lo and behold, there was an incident that happened with a Carnival worker, and I'm glad to see that we're being a little bit more conscious of the facts of doing these background checks. And I'm glad to see it's going to be automatic. We don't have to bring up a motion every time to do that, and I'm glad that we're doing it.
I appreciate the importance of it, but I will say that on behalf of the town and the committee, that provision was in place last year before you brought it up. It's in our contract with them.
Any other comments from the board?
What a great job that the Fourth of July continues to keep doing every year, all the people that volunteer their time, Scott Grant and his staff, and everybody that, all the way down to all the town employees, making it possible. Again, I think the board of selectmen say thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo that. Fourth of July in Wilmington is part of the fabric of what this town is about. It's really, it's very visible. If anyone from outside of Wilmington comes in and experiences it, I think they get a good sense in a very short period of time of what this community is about throughout the rest of the year. And you guys do such a great job representing us as a community. So I really do indeed sincerely thank you and everyone that you're here representing on, at the committee.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
And I'm also very delighted to hear that you've committed to having no rain this year, which will be good.
Any other comments from the board?
I just didn't appreciate that, you know, the comment there, and I do support it. I'm not going back and forth, and I've always supported, but I just find it interesting, the comment that that was done prior to me doing that. But I remember it was the second time when they allowed another day. That's when I made the mo, I'm not made, I'm glad it was the board that did it, but I find it ironic, the fact that nothing did become of that, if that's what the Fourth of July Commission did. I'm saying it was only the second time when they, if memory serves me, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, that when they wanted another day, that's when I made the motion to incorporate that, and that's when we found later on down the road that an incident happened all after the vote. But if you say that's the case, then I'm glad to hear that, but I just don't understand.
The provision was in place, and Mr. Kyra and I meet annually with all the involved department heads, and the request was brought to me by the Police Department in advance of last year, and so that provision was passed on to the Carnival vendor and is incorporated into our contract and was last year.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none? Any motions from the board?
To grant the request.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just briefly, I'm very proud to inform the board that the Fourth of July Committee this year made a twenty-five-hundred donation, dollar donation, to the effort to replace the veterans' crosses at Wildwood Cemetery.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck. Thank you.
Okay, our seven-ten appointment, a little late, but Andrea Core, Paralegal Christopher E. Coleman Esquire PC, on behalf of Bai Wu Jasmine Cuisine Inc., doing business as Jasmine Cuisine Restaurant, request to obtain a common victual license at the property located at thirty-five Lowell Street.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andrea Core. I'm the paralegal attorney, Chris Coleman's office. Tonight, I represent Bing Yuan Hui. She's the president of Jasmine Cushion Inc., buying a restaurant located at thirty-five Lowell Street, Wilmington, Massachusetts. Basically, it's just for the change of ownership. They will keep, you know, the layout, the equipment, they remain unchanged. The only thing they will change is to change their business name from Big One Restaurant to Jasmine Cushion. Their hours of operation will be from Monday to Thursday, eleven a.m. to ten p.m. Friday, Saturday, eleven a.m. to eleven p.m. Sunday will be from eleven-thirty to ten a, sorry, ten p.m. Ms. Hui, she has, she is, she has more than ten years' experience in operating a restaurant. She personally owned the other restaurant, Happy Garden, in Wever, from two thousand and five to two thousand and eight. We'll be happy to answer if the board have any questions.
Okay, before we ask any questions, are there any recommendations from department heads?
Mr. Chairman, we have a memorandum from the Health Director who recommends approval of the common victual license for Jasmine Cuisine Restaurant, subject to meeting all the requirements of the Board of Health. I think they still have to meet certain requirements left with the Board of Health, which I expect will be met, but if the board does decide to give the common victuous license, they should, I would recommend that they include subject to meeting the conditions of the Board of Health. And we also have from the Inspector of Buildings that he's reviewed the application and that there are no outstanding zoning issues.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
Just a question, if you said it, I apologize, I didn't catch it. When is it your client's attention to actually take over the operations and begin the operations on her behalf?
It will be about, you know, our timeframe will be end of, end of May or early June.
Okay. Motion?
I move to grant the request, subject to approval of the Board of Health.
I'd second that motion, and good luck. Motion made in seconded. All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Okay, our seven-fifteen appointments with Jamie McGoldy, Assistant Superintendent, Department of Public Works, for the reason of Silver Lake Invasion Species Mill Foil Control Project. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you recall, I was here in January of two thousand and nine, I believe, talking about the different problems we had at the lake regarding invasive species, more specifically Eurasian water mill foil. Just a quick background, it's a species that's not native to the area. A lot of other towns are experiencing the same problems that Silver Lake was. And since that meeting, we've hired the help of Aquatic Control Technologies out of Sutton Mass, and we've actually secured an order of conditions through the Conservation Commission to apply an herbicide known as Diquat to the lake. And we actually applied this herbicide last summer, June first, of oh-nine, and happy to report, we have an approximate ninety percent reduction of the weed in the lake, which is very, very pleasing to us, and we're real happy of the outcome. We've been monitoring the success of this all, you know, since the treatment back in, on June first, and we actually had a late-season survey in September, which they went out in a boat and did a GPS survey, which is where they got the number of ninety percent. We were expecting somewhere around eighty percent reduction, and I'm very pleased to see that it was a ninety percent reduction. So that means it's still mill foil in the lake, which we expected. It's a, the treatment is not systemic, meaning that it will not attack the roots, so we'll always have that mill foil, but the key is to try to keep it at bay, and I believe we did that to the best of our ability. So we had a follow-up meeting the beginning of this month of this year with Concom, and we've got approval to treat the lake a second time. We're actually planning on treating it on, this Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, and that'll be kind of part B of a one-two punch to eradicate, you know, the first knockout punch, so to speak, for this weed, before we can probably skip a year or two and keep it at bay. So we're very optimistic by treating on Wednesday, that we'll be able to skip next year. Of course, we'll be monitoring the success of the treatment this year, right through the fall, and again in the spring, to see if we'll need to treat, but if it's as successful as it was last year, we will not have to treat next year, and possibly not even in two thousand and twelve, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. So moving forward, I have to say that we received plenty of positive feedback from the Lake of Butters, local fishermen. I was actually up there today at the fish pier, just talking to some fishermen, and you can visibly see the difference in the lake. The wildlife is abundant. We got rid of the Eurasian water mill foil from about depths of six feet deep and shallower, but it's still present between six feet deep and ten feet deep. And you can see plenty of native plants in the lake that are still there, that are thriving. And I saw about a two-and-a-half pound bass went by. The clarity of the lake is probably better than it's been in years. If you haven't seen it yet, I advise you, you know, I just recommend you go out and take a look at it, because it is something to see. We're getting plenty of positive feedback, and the support has really been great for this, so. So moving forward, like I said, we're going to be treating this coming Wednesday, and we actually get to use a lesser concentration than we used last year. Last year, it was approximately one gallon per acre. We're going to be using about three-quarters of a gallon per acre this time. Last year, we treated about seventeen acres of a thirty-acre lake. This time, we'll be about fifteen acres. And it's just the outer ring of the lake, again, just in depths between ten and six feet deep. And the good news is, like I said, we're very confident that we won't have to treat next year, but again, the post-treatment survey will tell us that for sure. So it's a year-to-year survey, and we'll have to just keep our eye on it. We're not going to be able to eradicate it permanently, but we knew that going into it, and we do think that this is our best option, so. Just a quick timeline, as I said, we had the follow-up meeting with Concom already that was on May fifth of this year. Treatment will be on Wednesday of this week, and right around September, we'll have a comprehensive late-season survey, and Aquatic Control Technologies delivers their year-end report to us in December. At that point, we'll kind of reevaluate, reevaluate everything and determine if we'll have to come in next year. At this point, any questions I can answer for you? I'd be glad to.
I'd like to just say, I remember last year when this problem came up, and I think you've done a wonderful job, you and your department, and everybody else that worked with you on this, took over, had a problem, found a nice way to fix it and do it, and ninety percent down in one year is excellent. It's excellent. So I commend you and all that's worked with you. Any other questions, anything on the board? We said it.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that I have some personal experience. I've seen some other bodies of water that are totally choked off by that mill foil before anything's done about it, and trying to catch up to it is a near impossibility. So getting ahead of the curve, I think, was, was key, and I think it'll serve the town well going forward.
And just to add to it, like I said, if you look at the lake now, it looks very clear. It appears that there's nothing in there, but rest assured, it's hiding. So we do have to treat it this, you know, a second, a second year in a row to really give it that, that knockout blow. At that point, I think we'll have it at bay enough where we can sporadically do it a year after, maybe skip a year in between, so.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just want to also point out, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you complimenting the town on this. I do want to say that Jamie McGoldy has really, you know, taken the bull by the horn, so to speak, and has done a great job. It's also a good example of interdepartmental cooperation between the Department of Public Works, the Conservation Commission, the Recreation Commission, and this board, who were very involved with this initially. And I want to stress that this has all been done by the town. This is a, this, there's been no outside funding. The town has funded this program, you know, through the, through the town budget. We've not had to rely on, on any outside sources. It is solely a, a town-coordinated event, and Jamie deserves great credit for that, as you indicated.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Thanks for keeping the lake clean.
Yeah.
Too bad, too bad you guys weren't hot-topping one-twenty-nine and doing the construction work.
One step at a time.
Very good. Jamie, thank you very much for the update. Kind of brings us into our next agenda item while Jamie's still here. I asked the town manager if I could just say a few words on the cross project and the Wilmington Veterans Lot at the cemetery in the front. Most people know those, there's thirty-one, there's thirty crosses up there, One Star David, and they were installed, as far as we could tell, in early nineteen sixty, late nineteen fifties, and they've been up there for all those years, and they were made of state-of-the-art aluminum at the time. And there was a Wilmington middle school student, National Junior Honor Society, took it on as a project. Ryan Carachino took this on as a project to raise the funds to purchase new crosses that we will be unveiling next Monday on Memorial Day during part of our ceremonies. And I just want to say that the, he did all the fundraising, the crosses were made and delivered, and our Cemetery Department, DPW, with the direction of Jamie, did an amazing job installing these crosses. I even got a call from the gentleman that made the crosses, obviously does monuments for a living, commenting Jamie and his men that were putting them in, the professionalism and the care that they took to put those crosses in. Just want to, I want to publicly thank you and invite everybody else to come out next, next Monday. The parade steps off at ten o'clock, as it always does, at the Market Basket, goes down Main Street, down sixty-two to the cemetery. We will be starting our ceremonies a half hour later this year at eleven-thirty, just to give more people time to finish watching the parade and come out, down to the cemetery and take part in the Memorial Day ceremonies. But again, there's so many people to thank. Everybody that donated the money, it was just under thirty thousand dollars was raised so we could purchase these crosses, and I think it shows the respect all the KIA and the MIA's deserve, and that this town of Wilmington has done for all its veterans for, you know, for many, many years. So I appreciate all your help and all your crew, and hopefully see everybody there next Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a quick comment about that. You mentioned, what's the young person's name that
Ryan Carachino.
Ryan. You know, we're all, not we, but, but I think our population, our culture is oftentimes very quick to sort of criticize young people. Oh, the kids today. And here's just a real example of a kid who's going above and beyond, and I think, an extra couple of words in Ryan's, on Ryan's behalf, but also, I suspect there's a lot of kids like Ryan that would, that are willing and want to step up and live their lives in examples like that. So, you know, I just think, again, it's worth our calling him out and saying thank you to him, but also asking other children, other kids in the community, to be aware of that and witness that, and, you know, use it as an example. There are good things to be done out there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Communications?
Communications, Mr. Chairman. Just providing you information regarding the Senate Ways and Means Fiscal Year Eleven Budget Proposal. As you know, they have passed on May nineteenth, their version of the fiscal year two thousand and eleven budget, so now we have the Governor's Budget, the House Budget, and what will become, I'm sure, the Senate Budget, and then the House and Senate will meet in conference committee to come up with a final budget that they will send to the Governor. What I provided for you was a spreadsheet that shows what the different estimates were for this year, the actual from fiscal year two thousand and ten, and then next year's budget estimate from the town, the Governor, the House, and the Senate. The Senate's version of the budget in Chapter Seventy Money is the major change in local aid, in that it's about a hundred and one thousand dollars less than the Governor's Budget, but it's about seventy-two thousand dollars more than the House Budget. So when we, when we look at this on its surface, it appears to be going in the right direction, except there are two things that there hasn't been a lot of talk about that I need to bring to the attention of the board, and one is the impact on the early childhood education, and the other is on the circuit breaker. The, as you know, we are one of the few communities that fund an all-day kindergarten program at no cost to, to the parent or to the, to the guardian. So a child can go without having to sign into a lottery, without having to pay any money, they go at, at no cost. We'll continue to do this, but part of the reason why we do this is because we get grant money that we work hard to receive. The Senate has reduced that grant entitlement in their version of the budget by about twenty-five percent. So for Wilmington, that's going to be about forty-three thousand dollars. Even greater than that is the Senate has also decreased funding for the, what's referred to as the circuit breaker money, to the tune of about forty-two percent statewide, and for Wilmington, that means about two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. So when you look at the numbers that are being released on the surface, and you look at the local aid numbers, and compare the House version to the Senate version, although the Senate version in total goes up by about seventy-two thousand dollars, the fact is, you don't see in the, in that local aid accounting, the monies that are being reduced as a result of the reduction in the circuit breaker account and in the early childhood grant account. So we have been in contact with Senator Tar, and I know certainly Superintendent Benton and the School Committee have been in contact with him, as he has written to us, and you have a copy of that correspondence, to urge him to try to restore those funds, because those funds were in the House version. So we're, we really would like to see those funds come back, full-day kindergarten program and the circuit breaker money. And the circuit breaker, rather than getting into a large explanation about that, that's funding that we're able to get to assist for out-of-district placements in special education. So that's where that money goes. It's a, it's formula-based, and again, the, the problem is that nearly two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars less will come to Wilmington if this version passes. And certainly, I'll be back to you, hopefully by the next meeting, to let you know what's happening on local aid.
Thank you.
Are there questions? The board has a notification regarding the Interstate ninety-three Tri-Town interchange development area, where there is going to be a form-based code proposal discussed at a meeting with boards of selectmen from Wilmington, Andover, and Tewksbury, that will be held on Tuesday, June eighth, at seven p.m. here at the Wilmington Town Hall. It's a public meeting. You would expect, if you attend, to see an overview presentation of the draft form-based code that will include a review of the general structure of the code and an overview of key code elements that would include framework and site-specific regulating plans, building form standards, urban space standards, parking standards, and building functions and land use. Again, that meeting is June eighth. It will be a Tri-Town Planning Board meeting, but all are invited. It will be held here at the, at the Town Hall. The board also has a letter from Betsy Friedberg, the National Register Director for the Massachusetts Historical Commission, that she sent to the National Register of Historic Places, enclosing a nomination for the Butters Farmhouse at one sixty-five Chestnut Street in the category of first-period buildings. The nomination, the application was initially submitted by the Wilmington Historical Commission, and the Commonwealth of Mass Historical Commission has approved its eligibility through a state review board, and now they have notified the National Register of Historic Places of that fact. Mr. Chairman, the board is in receipt of a letter addressed to you from Joseph Martinello, the Event Chairman for Relay for Life of Wilmington, for permission to host an informational table at the Memorial Day Parade on the Common or at a location deemed acceptable by the Board of Selectmen. This would be providing details on the upcoming American Cancer Society Relay for Life event in Wilmington to be held on June eighteenth and nineteenth, and in addition, it would provide information about the Cancer Prevention Study III enrollment, which will occur this year, only at the Relay for Life event in Wilmington.
Any questions or comments on that?
I'm curious what the board thinks. I'm, you know, I look at the organization that's requesting it and the terrific job they did last year, the terrific job they appear to be doing this year, and you want to just instinctively help them in any way possible, but I also don't want to derogate from the, you know, from the event on Memorial Day. So I'm curious what everybody else thinks.
That was my first blush as well, and I would, I would not like to see them on the Common itself, right across the high school. It is an informational desk. They're going to be handing out pamphlets and having people enroll in the three-days, the Cancer Prevention Study III, maybe somewhere over by the Fourth of July Building, where the children have their hot dogs after. Maybe they could set up a little informational table over there. Obviously, there's a big crowd there, too, for their families will be there after the parade. Anybody else have any ideas on that, or?
Certainly. I'm so glad, right? Please.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that I think that Memorial Day in tribute to the veterans and the soldiers of that day, and our respect of lost ones, I think that, as you said, the Fourth of July, you know, when that pot is, is the parade finishes up, there is always a stand there, as you said, for concessions and, you know, drinks and hot dogs. I think it'd be a great place to have them, that would be a great spot to have them there.
Sorry about that. Yeah, no, no, you're good. Parking, you know, you want to place them safely, but obviously, you know, find them a spot, I have no objection to it, certainly.
Did you want to, if that's the direction of the board, did you want a motion that would give the chairman of the Memorial Day Parade the authority to locate them in an area so designated by the board, or do you want to be specific about the area? I'm hearing you say not on the Common. We certainly have to be mindful of the traffic and all the folks who will be parking, so I guess we would need to put them either on one end or the other of the tables where refreshments are given, or on the, maybe in the front section of the Fourth of July.
Right, I think more towards the back of where the table is, where they're setting up for the refreshments, the hot dogs and
What about the grassy area over where Swain used to be? Is that too far? Will they not get the exposure that they're looking for in that vicinity? You know what I mean? Where we had registration for the moving wall area.
I think by, by the Fourth of July, only because the cars will park, probably in between, you know, that parking area, so they'll be divided, but I think if, you know, to help them out, though, by putting them over by that, that stand, it'll be all one area. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I agree. I just want to make sure they're safe, as in, that the people are safe.
So we want to do that, as the board has specifically given a location to, to set up the table?
I'd be inclined to say we're not.
Yeah, I'd be inclined to offer a motion that approves the request for a place on the parking lot, vicinity of the parking lot, subject to the approval of the Wilmington Police Department and organizers of the parade. Between the Police Department and the folks who are handling the parade, they can find a spot that'll work, right?
Sure.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. All in favor? unanimous?
Motion made and second. All in favor? unanimous?
The board is being asked to consider issuing a Sunday entertainment license to Fiesta shows in conjunction with the Fourth of July celebration. This comes up anytime the, the carnival activity also includes a Sunday date. They have submitted all of the paperwork and the, made the, made the payment. It's subject to the board. We did contact the Chief of Police, and he indicates that he recommends approval of the Sunday entertainment license request for the period 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And so it's up to a motion from the, from Selectmen.
Okay. Question, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we issue a Sunday entertainment license to Fiesta shows in conjunction with the Fourth of July celebration.
Second. Motion made and second. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider the summer meeting schedule. As we have typically done in the past, the board does meet both meetings in June, but come August, come July and August, they have selected one date. And the chairman is recommending, based upon the scheduling of meetings, that those dates be July 19th and August 16th, with the understanding that if the other business requires the board to meet, that the board would go into session on another date.
Comments, questions? We need to form a motion for that, or?
Yes.
Yes. Questions, comments, or motions? Those dates work for everybody?
Yeah. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we schedule the, the summer meetings for the Board of Selectmen for July 19th and August 16th.
Second. Motion made and second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Public comments?
Hello, I noticed on your important dates, June 14th, the Minutemen are having a flag retirement ceremony up at headquarters of the tavern. I'd like to invite all you Selectmen and mostly any resident that is watching us tonight, bring their kids, children. If you know yourself, flag retirement is very important. They're not just disposed. And do we do it properly? Yes, we do it with dignity. You knew, you know the routine. So all I'd like to say is, I'd like to invite everyone in Wilmington, young and old, to come to the tavern or headquarters out back on the 14th. A rain day, I think, we'll see what Mother Nature brings us, but not under normal circumstances, it'll be held that day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, in the public comments? Important dates. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, new business committee reports.
I'll speak briefly to the I-93 Task Force. There was a meeting that was held midweek last week, with the specific intent and discussion point being the continued discussions, I guess I'll say, with regards to, or in conjunction with federal and state highway, and especially the town of Tewksbury and the West Side connection of the potential new interchange. And so language has continued to be lobbed back and forth, and I guess I will just summarize it in simply saying that what I heard for the first time was that federal and state highway were indicating, and I asked Mr. Kyra to correct me if I speak incorrectly here, that one of the words I heard was that there need to be a connection, any new interchange needs to have a connection to a local road network. And I hadn't heard that word before specifically. But also, the representatives there from federal highway were articulating that they were very respect, receptive to creative ideas about how to achieve that local road connection that would be very low in impact to the neighborhoods and community. So I think the people in Tewksbury, or the, the folks representing Tewksbury, are listening and hearing it, and are working aggressively to try to find a mutually agreeable solution going forward. But again, these discussions continue, and I encourage and really want to strongly encourage, if I may, people from Wilmington to come out on June 8th to the Form-Based Code presentation, because really ultimately, what will come from this over the course of the next 20-plus, 30 years will be the complexion and the personality of that region once the, the interchange does go in. So I'll just end on that note. And more, obviously, information is available at the various websites. You can check the, the town website now to, to view that as well, and links to the, the Form-Based Code website.
Any other comments?
Might just touch on the website, the new website, the town website is up and running and looks fantastic, and I'd like to thank all the people that put all the hard work into that. It looks very nice. Very easy to use to get around it. Now, important dates.
That's, that's a work in progress, too. We're going to try to continue to improve that, but I appreciate your comments. We've had a lot of nice comments on the new website. One thing that I would ask the board, at their last meeting, they signed license and access agreements with Olin in order to do testing. You will recall that. We have one other agreement to be signed that just came to us today, and in fact, arrived here at 10:30 this morning. It has had the review of Town Council, and really, it's just a, a new well location at the end of Jewel Drive, similar to the other license agreements that you have signed. But where the others came to the board, I thought it was appropriate to bring this to the board as well. This is a more appropriate site than one of the, one of the six, because the other one was too close to a gas pipeline, and this, this is really a better, a better location at this point. So I would ask for a motion if the board so, so desires to approve signing the, the access agreement.
Any questions or a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we sign the agreement as, as stated, for Olin to continue on to access.
Second. Motion made and second. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're the tab pages out. In terms of important dates, again, May 31st, the Memorial Day Parade, as the chairman indicated, kicks off at 10:00 AM. We hope all will attend and go from the parade right to the cemetery for the ceremonies honoring our veterans. June 2nd, the Fourth of July Chamber of Commerce luncheon will be held at the Knights of Columbus. I'm not sure what the times are. Do you know the time?
June?
It's like 11:30 to, to 1:30 or 2:00. And there's certainly information on, on the Fourth of July website about that, but that's June 2nd. That's an important fundraiser to help raise money for the fireworks. On June 3rd, the Junction Route 93 Development Area Task Force meeting will be held here at the Town Hall at 8:00 AM. Also would let people know that Shoshin Tech students, the class of 2010, will be graduating on June 3rd. And on June 6th, the Wilmington High School class of 2010 will be graduating. On Saturday, June 5th, is the fishing derby at the Town Beach from 9:00 AM to noon. All fishermen, experienced or otherwise, are welcome to attend. This is a pretty well-attended event. You heard from Mr. McGoldy today that the, the bass are flowing, I guess. I think he said-
And big?
Two-and-a-half pounds, right.
Put it back in.
Again, a reminder of the joint planning board meeting with the towns of Andover and Tewksbury at the Town Hall at 7:00 on June 8th. Town Beach will open officially. We're life guards will be staffing Town Beach beginning on June 12th. And as Mr. Bodnar indicated, we do have listed here the flag retirement ceremony at Minutemen Headquarters at the Heaton Tavern at 6:00 PM on Monday, June 14th, and that's when the board next meets.
And June 6th, high school graduation.
Right.
Very good. Thank you. Make a move, Jared. Make a second. Second?
Has the, no, I'm second.
Yeah, you made it. Okay. Motion made and second. All in favor? Unanimous?